Clerk Colerole.
Councilmember Cosarelli.
Here.
DePany?
Here.
Brazziano?
Here.
Latari?
Here.
Councilmember Robel?
Here.
Schumelberg?
Here.
Mayor Menlo.
Here.
Sunshine?
Pursuant to the requirements of the Public Meetings Act, notice that this meeting was published in the Thursday, July 7th edition of the Bellable Times and Travel Editor. A copy of the annual meeting notice posted on the Bellable Times bulletin board and copies are piled on the municipal clerk's office.
Pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with every intention of our heart.
I'd like to welcome everybody to the first meeting of September. As we all know, the first meeting in September is a combined conference and regular meeting. We do have a short presentation prior to getting into discussions, but just so we all know, once we enter discussions, it might seem a little odd, but it is a conversation in and among the members of the council, along with our invited professionals. If you do hear something that you're interested about, you most certainly can speak during the public commenting portion, but while we're in discussion, it's really in and among ourselves. But prior to that, we have a very special presentation to a fine young man who has represented Bellable, and we don't get to say this often, he's not only represented Bellable, but he's represented our country. Mr. Christian Matos is here with us, and I'm going to call him up for a proclamation. So you're going to get a little bit of information when I read the proclamation, but it was just a few weeks, if not a month or so ago, when I was reached out by Christian's mom via email, and she informed me that her son was representing this country and playing in the U-12 championship in Taiwan. This is not, you know, we're talking world, we're talking international stuff here, something that we're very, very proud of. And, you know, just like I say, I often get people that either meet me on the street or email me or message me on social media and ask me why I don't acknowledge this, or why don't, I just don't know sometimes. So I'm grateful when parents or coaches or managers reach out to me to tell me about somebody winning a championship, and then we can try and honor them as best we can. But we have a very fine young man here who's absolutely worthy of our honor and our respect. So without further ado, I'm going to read this proclamation, which will be on the council agenda this evening. It says, "Resolved by the municipal council of the township of Bellable, whereas Christian Matos, a Bellable resident, was chosen to represent Team USA at the World Confederation U-12 Baseball World Cup in Taiwan. And whereas only eighteen players from across the country were selected for Team USA, with Christian, a lefty hitting catcher, being the lone player selected from the northeast. And whereas, during the World Baseball Confederation U-12 Baseball World Cup, Team USA brought home the gold medal." And I think I see it right here. "The team was undefeated, eight, zero, and zero, with Christian Matos hitting three home runs. Whereas, the mayor municipal council of township of Bellable do find it fitting to honor Christian Matos and Team USA for his display of dedication, commitment, perseverance, and through his efforts, did an outstanding job and is richly deserving of our collective congratulations. Now therefore be resolved that the mayor municipal council of township of Bellable do hereby recognize the excellence and devotion exhibited by Christian and Team USA twelve-U baseball team for winning the gold medal at the World Baseball U-12 Baseball World Cup. And be it further resolved that the mayor municipal council of township of Bellable commend Christian Matos and wish him continued success in the years to come." Thank you, Christian. Mom and dad, you want to come up for a quick question? And family? You hold it up, hold the gold medals. Thank you so much. We're going to take a minute or two recess if you guys want to. Okay, so as I said, this is our combined conference regular meeting. We do have one discussion, but I believe it's put on the Township Manager, Mr. Icono. The floor is yours, just use your microphone, please.
Hey, good evening, everyone. At our last council meeting, we spoke about a somewhat invasive, I guess it would be a special request from the law bar, that our only law bar in Bellable. And in lieu of the fact that their first choice would have been a twenty-four hour operation, which was not perceived too well from us, they came back with a compromise. It's not going to take long to go through it, because basically it's a stall with a door closed in the store, it's pickup window only, there's no cash involved, things of that nature. We, after speaking to one of our, during this last month since their initial request, they said that, you know, they would certainly be open to more or less a trial period, you know, give them ninety days to prove that that's not an issue. In that ninety days, they would hire security if that was one of our requests, and the security obviously would be located in the parking lot, because the store itself is absolutely closed, there's no cash exchanged. This is geared towards door dash, things of that nature. We did ask them to provide in their overview some security and crime statistics, which I believe you all have. And again, if we do allow this type of operation on site, we could, you know, clearly relate to them that a trial period, we will, if the council so desires, we give them, if they give this program opportunity, say for ninety days, we would come back and say, okay, the first ninety days was, you know, no issues, everything worked well, and we continue. Obviously, in the first ninety days, if we have some incidents and some concerns and some challenges, we would not allow the program to continue. I think that's basically in a nutshell, I guess. I don't think it would require a resolution or anything, I think we would just go ahead and have an agreement that it would be a ninety day trial period. We'll let the county attorney speak to that, I'm not sure.
No, they would have to go back to the planning board. They couldn't do this, you couldn't just, township doesn't have the authority to authorize it.
The window operation?
Sure.
Because it's hours of.
Because you're opening in eight hours.
They probably should have went to the.
They did go to the planning board, the planning board was not in favor.
Of this operation?
I will say though, I don't know if you were there, Tom, I will say when it came before the planning board, it came before us as let us stay open late. It was not this plan.
But this.
So not to waste any more time, why don't we just go ahead and just follow this to the planning board and ask them to give us our recommendation?
No, because the planning board has to, presumably, and I don't have the planning board resolution in front of me, but I'm just going to assume that the planning board resolution says that there are hours of operation, not there, which means when they're open. What they're proposing is to change that, okay? They want to open in a different fashion than they ordinarily open according to this, but it would be changing, I'm going to assume, now, if I'm wrong on the planning board resolution, because I've never seen it, I'm going to assume it has an hours of operation, which is why, which is why they're here.
Right. But my only thing again, just so I get the proper direction to relate to Walmar, if the planning board so fits, that sees that this would be acceptable to extend the hours of operation, then it comes back to the council, I think.
No, 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 the council really has no decision-making power.
Unless we have an order. The town. Just regard this quick presentation.
No, no, I think, listen, I would expect that they want, that the planning board, the township can express either their concern or lack of concern for an operation like this, it has no bearing on anything, okay? So, but the township, as a mayor and council, if somebody wanted to, to, just like we do resolutions supporting things, it wouldn't have any bearing on whether or not what the planning board does, the township, mayor and council have no influence over the planning board, okay? The township mayor and council can either direct you to indicate that they would be as supportive of such an arrangement, but it's ultimately the decision of the planning board whether or not they amend their resolution, or Dean.
So I have a question, though, if it's in a redevelopment agreement or plan, but if it's a local ordinance that sets the time, that's us.
Right, so Dean, you could, so, oh, that's right, this is a redevelopment agreement, right? So it would have to be an amendment.
I'd have to look into it, but I think the hours of operation are in the redevelopment plan.
Right.
So what would happen is, there would be an amendment to the plan, which would start here, they refer to the planning board for consistency review.
I was, I forgot there is a redevelopment plan.
I think it's in the plan, I don't have the papers with me.
Well, no, because I saw, I saw Dean sitting there, and then the bell started going over my head.
The mayor's correct, it had appeared before the planning board, I think on consistency review, and it was not included under terms of manager described, so.
Different terms. It would be. Right, so you have to go back before the planning board. No, but Dean has to look at the redevelopment plan and make sure where the.
Where's this meeting at?
Anthony.
It's Dean's fault.
Dean.
It's Dean, probably.
I think, I don't have the. No, 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 it's, it's not Dean's fault. Dean, Dean, Dean is our redevelopment council.
It's all your fault.
Dean, Dean, Dean's our redevelopment council, Dean can look at the redevelopment plan and will provide.
Tell us guidance.
Provide me with guidance that I can report to the mayor and council with respect to this.
If we choose to move forward, you do.
Well, yeah, so Dean, Dean can tell us, once he reviews the redevelopment plan, he'll give me instructions with respect to that, and then we'll go from there, okay?
Got it.
Mr. Manager, you want to recite all, do you want to rehash all that?
Call Dean.
Yeah, I'll call Dean, I'll take care of it.
Waiting on Dean. Okay, next item on our agenda is report of the manager. Microphone, please.
And good evening, and welcome back after a long summer. Those are some of the items that I want to cover. Back to school, we have all forty crossing guards back to work, and we use this time to, you know, give everybody a reminder that early in the morning and late afternoons, a lot of children are going to school, so we can all slow down. I know, working with Bikini Bikini, with traffic, trying to keep, again, we can't be on every street with radar and speed alerts, but certainly the message that we want to get out is, you know, school is back, we need to slow down, and certainly we're hoping for everybody's cooperation on that. I know the mayor does a list of events coming up, but I do want to just talk about the flu shots. We have all flu shots, eight fifteen, eight twenty-nine, ten six, ten fifteen. The reason why I say that is because the flu shot and flu season is very important, especially now that we've most recently seen an uptick with COVID, whether it's employees, friends, family, there's an increase in COVID. So, you know, we're never really out of the woods yet, so it's just, obviously, we know what the pandemic did to us, so we monitor that very closely, and we associate that with, we associate flu and COVID all together, so that's very important for the people that are getting flu shots. The water main, believe it or not, the street just opened up again on Saturday. So as much as we did get our water pressure back and our water back, the actual fix itself and the street is back open as of this past Saturday, which is good news. The other thing that I'd like to bring out in September is that our fall recreation program started, and we have a couple of, just, I thought were pretty interesting numbers. We have over nine hundred students participating in our fall recreation programs. Soccer has four hundred and forty-three, that's just in-town soccer, four hundred and forty-three children are playing our soccer. We have a travel soccer team, we have a flag football team of sixty students, we have a hundred and fifty cheerleaders, and our junior bucks, the highest ever been, which is a great Peter program for the high school, has a hundred and sixty-two football players this year. That's the highest number in a long time. I know we don't recite scores, but one of our, I don't know if it was the juniors or seniors, beat Nutley last week thirty-one, zero. So that's certainly news, news worthy, because the mayor's cup is coming up, and we haven't had that trophy in town hall for a while, so maybe this is the year. We also have a travel softball being going on, and also we are offering a baseball clinic for forty athletes. So that's my September report, certainly open to questions in concern.
Questions recognized, report. Hearing none, seeing none. Next item on the agenda is the report of the mayor. So, past events, we had a wonderful nine eleven ceremony on Saturday, I'd like to thank the committee, and, I'm sorry, on Sunday, to thank the committee and all those who came out. It's always a very touching, moving ceremony, I know the committee works very long and hard on that. We also had on Thursday a successful cone with the cop, usually we do coffee with the cop, we've done all kinds of things with our cops, but cone with the cop was very successful, I know because you couldn't park for the planning board meeting that night.
Yes.
Also, we did conclude our very successful first-time summer entertainment series, it wasn't a summer concert series, because this year we also had entertainment, we concluded that last week with some really good fireworks. Upcoming events, this coming Thursday, the township and the school district are joining forces to kick off a month-long Hispanic Heritage Month celebration, and we will be doing that with our Bellable Police Department, playing two, playing basically a softball tournament with Puerto Rican police, they are in town, I've already been, I've already been with them twice now, and I'll be with them, I think, Friday night at a gala and Sunday for their parade, but it's going to be this coming Thursday at Number Eight School to thank the Board of Education, one for providing the facility and all the efforts that they've been doing and assisting us in pulling this off. So starting Hispanic Heritage Month this Thursday, six o'clock, Number Eight School. This coming Saturday, there's a lot happening in Bellable this coming Saturday, the one big thing is going to be the farmer's market green fair, they're joining forces this time, so it's going to be from eleven to two. And last time, this, this is more of a school thing, right, the green fair? No. Got it. What was the big event last year that was huge?
Green fair.
So that event draws a ton of people, and now we've joined that together with our farmer's market, so that's going to be this coming Saturday, eleven to two. Next Wednesday and next Saturday, Essex County Home Improvement Program, much like the Bellable Home Improvement Program, we have north of a million dollars to help people with twenty-five thousand dollar grants, the county has a very similar program with their own pot of money for that, and that's going to be next Wednesday and Saturday at the Senior Center, Wednesday is six o'clock, Saturday is ten AM, information is on the website. And I want to let everybody know that Saturday and Sunday, October first and second, are our townwide garage sales, last, we do them twice a year, spring and fall, our spring one broke a record, we breached, I think, the hundred and ten or hundred and fifteen mark as far as participation. How many? One sixty. So we're going to try and outdo that, that's going to be Saturday in September, Saturday and Sunday, October first and second, there is no fee to participate, but we do want you to register, so we can promote the fact that your house is going to be on that list that we distribute. Also looking, maybe the next weekend is going to be our food truck festival, you'll hear and see a lot more about that in these coming weeks. Just some quick news, today I spoke and dealt with the governor's office, they reached out to let us know that the governor will be in town for the Essex Hudson Greenway dedication, it's a nine-mile linear park that I've been talking about for years now, it's a game changer for all the municipalities along that way, it's nine miles from Mont clair to Jersey City, it's going to be an elevated park, much like the High Line in New York City, so I don't have the exact date, the governor will be in town for that, and he's actually coming to Bellable for that. September fifteenth through October fifteenth, flu shots, as the manager mentioned, information's on our website. As the manager also mentioned, the water main is finally fixed, so expect a final post from me, probably one day this week, thanking everybody that helped out during that. Obviously, our senator was one of the first people to call, and she was also one of the first people to come up with some supplies for us. The governor's office was in constant contact with me the day of, including in the evenings and the, right after that, in the aftermath, and they also really stepped up with providing supplies. On our township website, new nine-one-one, reverse nine-one-one provider called Mixel, please make sure you get to that website, on the town website, and put your phone in. We're trying to transfer all the other numbers that used to be in the old system, it hasn't been perfect yet, so your best bet is to go and sign up. The track, I get daily messages on social media about the track, every time somebody steps on the track, somebody lets me know, anytime there's a dog on the track, anytime there's people riding bikes on the track, people let me know. The manager, I know Deputy Mayor Brazziano is working on site security, facility security for that, but we will be opening that track very, very shortly. Winding down, we are still raising money for our Purple Heart vets, they have a great monument in our, in our Veterans Memorial on Washington Union Avenue, ten thousand dollars is what they need, they're inching their way toward that. Great program, always happening at our Buffalo Public Library, make sure you check that out. And lastly, I'm told we have to get the deputy chief involved in it, I know I, I was making you work today, Deb. This last one, though, is you got to put our best, our best men or women on this one, the groundhog is still at large in the community garden, he's wreaking, or he or she is wreaking havoc on some of the vegetables, we might have to put our best, our best people on that. We do have photos and surveillance photos that I'll be posting on my social media about that, and that's true, I really do. That's it. Next item on our agenda is the committee reports. First meeting in the month, we have had hot committees, any council member wants to jump in any topic, they most certainly do so. I'll start to my left, the deputy mayor, anything to report? Councilwoman Burke? Councilman Latari? Councilwoman? Councilmember Cosarelli? Nothing. Okay, we're moving along. Next item on the agenda, approval minutes.
Line conference regular meeting of the number nine, and the regular meeting of the number forty-third.
Need a motion?
Second.
Got a motion, got a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Actually, no, are there any things in that one? For an absence? No, just do a vote, vote. Everybody good? Last year, wow. We're all giving guesses anyway, guys. Next item on the agenda is communication.
A request received from Louis Muniz for permission to close Lloyd Flakes on Thursday, September fifteenth, twenty twenty-two. B request received from Franklin Shiller Doxes for permission to conduct their annual five K breast cancer work on Saturday, October twenty-second. And resolution received from the Bellable Planning Board recommending that the township council should designate the property known as, known as six oh five, six oh nine Washington Avenue and one seventy-four Graylock Parkway as a non-condemnation area in need of redevelopment.
Okay, I'm assuming A and B go right to the police department?
Correct.
Next item on the agenda is ordinances, ordinances for introduction.
Orders number one, an ordinance to amend or revise general ordinances of the township of Bellable, chapter eight dash sixteen, handicap parking spaces.
Make a motion for introduction, second.
There's a motion made in second for introduction, clerk Colerole.
Councilmember Cosarelli.
Yes.
DePany?
Yes.
Brazziano?
Yes.
Latari?
Yes.
Robel?
Yes.
Schumelberg?
Yes.
Mayor Menlo.
Yes, orders number two.
An ordinance to amend, revise, and supplement the township code of the township of Bellable, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, chapter two entitled administration, part two entitled personnel, most notably section two dash nineteen point six, entitled supplemental compensation plans.
Make a motion for introduction, second.
Motion made in second for introduction, clerk Colerole.
Councilmember Cosarelli.
Yes.
DePany?
Yes.
Brazziano?
Yes.
Latari?
Yes.
Robel?
Yes.
Schumelberg?
Yes.
Mayor Menlo.
Yes, orders number three.
Orders number three, an ordinance amending chapter nine, section two of the codified ordinances of the township of Bellable entitled parking meters.
Make a motion for introduction, second.
Motion made in second for introduction, clerk Colerole.
Councilmember Cosarelli.
Yes.
DePany?
Yes.
Brazziano?
Yes.
Latari?
Yes.
Robel?
Yes.
Schumelberg?
Yes.
Mayor Menlo.
Yes. Next, we have ordinances for public hearings, second and final reading.
Orders number one, for public hearing, an ordinance of the township council of the township of Bellable, amending chapter two, specifically chapter two dash nine point or D, permit, please schedule.
Make a motion open for public hearing, second.
There's a motion made in second to open public hearing, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, everybody, we're open for public hearing on this ordinance and this ordinance only. If you have a question about this ordinance, please come forward, state your name and address for the record, and please ask your question pertaining to just this ordinance. Mr. Frinadon.
Yes, I'd just like to know what you're doing with this order, are we raising fees or permit to what?
No, it's not permits, it is our facilities, there was always, there was always fees, some were buried in our ordinances, they would never really adhere to, but now, much like the school district did, because they have a brand-new facility in the grade school, they now have a fee schedule to rent that or to use that for any outside teams, any club teams, since we now have really good facilities, and we've been getting a lot of inquiries about renting them, we now have rates that are on par with either school district or surrendered towns.
So these are fees to rent our facilities?
Right.
Do not permit fees like building progress.
No, recreational facilities. All in favor, motion to close the public hearing?
Motion, and they're running that up.
We have a motion made in second to close and move for final adoption. Clerk Colerole.
Councilmember Cosarelli.
Yes.
DePany?
Yes.
Brazziano?
Yes.
Latari?
Yes.
Robel?
Yes.
Schumelberg?
Yes.
Mayor Menlo.
Yes. Orders number two.
An ordinance of the township council of the township of Bellable repealing article three, section twenty-six, and establishing chapter thirty-six of the township code, parks, fields, and playgrounds.
Motion open for public hearing, second.
We have a motion made in second to open for public hearing, all in favor?
Aye.
We're open for public hearing on this ordinance and this ordinance only, it is connected to the prior one. No, it's not, I'm sorry, it's not.
Well, partially, yes.
We're deleting, we're deleting the old stuff, adding the new. Anybody else? No? It's not chapter nineteen, right?
No, no, no. A new chapter thirty-six.
Would you stop and make the nature of it?
Sure.
Okay, so previously, we had, in terms of what conduct goes on in parks and playgrounds and things, it was under the police section of the ordinance, and it was two paragraphs in it, there was very little control and diets. What was drafted is a completely new chapter, it's a new chapter in our code book thirty-six, the last one was thirty-five, this is completely new chapter thirty-six, and it gives specifics with respect to how people conduct themselves, like bikes on the track and things like that, and it's pretty extensive, it's pretty extensive, before we didn't have any of that. Now, with the new parks and the new facilities, mayor and council, and we, I think, discussed this not long ago, mayor and council wanted to have more, more to enforce in terms of, and it still hasn't, there's still fines for violation and things like that, but that's what it is.
Thank you for your attorney. Seeing none, here of none, all in favor, motion to close and move for final adoption?
Motion, second.
We have a motion made in second to close and move for final adoption, clerk Colerole.
Councilmember Cosarelli.
Yes.
DePany?
Yes.
Brazziano?
Yes.
Latari?
Yes.
Robel?
Yes.
Schumelberg?
Yes.
Mayor Menlo.
Yes. Orders number three.
Ordinance rescinding the financial agreement with MVJ Enterprises LLC for properly designated as block two one zero one, lot nineteen point zero one of the official tax map of the township of Bellable.
I need a motion to open?
Motion, second.
There's a motion made in second to open, all in favor?
Aye.
We are now open for public commenting on this ordinance and this ordinance only. Mr. Dros.
Our real Dros ninety-five bill. I see you rescinding the tax abatement on this one here, but my question is, has this particular company or individual used up any of their tax abatement, and if they did, do they have to reimburse us since they lied on their application? You understand what I'm saying? In other words, you received the tax abatement in twenty-one, did he utilize any of the tax abatement?
Look, Mary, I don't believe so, I don't think it was assessed yet, the improvements were assessed yet, so I don't believe so.
Okay, that was only concerned, I'm just saying if he did utilize some of it, he would be entitled to give it back to us.
I, I don't believe so, I don't believe it's assessed and completed yet, so, in terms of.
So what kind of taxes was he paying in the meantime, prior to that?
Whatever the, it was, whatever it was before.
Two family houses?
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, that's all.
All right, two family houses. Oh, anybody else? Hearing none, seeing none, does any motion to close and move for final adoption?
Motion.
Second.
Have a motion made in second to close and move for final adoption. Clerk Colerole?
Councilmember Cazarelli?
Yes.
Depeny?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Notari?
Yes.
Robell?
Yes.
Trumal Burke?
Yes.
Mayor amendment.
Yes. Order number four.
Order to approving the First Amendment to the Financial Agreements by and between the Township of Bellevue and R and R Bellevue Urban Renewal LLC.
Make a motion to table?
Second.
We have a motion made in second to table this ordinance based on our attorney's recommendation. Clerk Colerole?
Councilmember Cazarelli?
Yes.
Depeny?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Notari?
Yes.
Robell?
Yes.
Trumal Burke?
Yes.
Mayor amendment.
Yes. Number five.
Ordinance of the Mayor and Council of the Township of Bellevue, County of Essex, New Jersey, amending the program established pursuant to NJSA four D colon twenty-one dash one at six.
Make a motion open for a public hearing?
Second.
Motion made in second to open for public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
We are open for public hearing on this ordinance and this ordinance only. If you have any questions, come forward. Hearing none, seeing none, all in favor, a motion to close.
Motion to close and move for final adoption?
Second.
We have a motion made in second to close and move for final adoption. Clerk Colerole?
Councilmember Cazarelli?
Yes.
Depeny?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Notari?
Yes.
Robell?
Yes.
Trumal Burke?
Yes.
Mayor amendment.
Yes. Next item on our agenda is public commenting. I'm going to entertain a motion in second to open for public commenting. If you have something to comment about, you have five minutes, please come forward, state your name and address for the record, and we ask that you please try to keep your comments about government business or about Bellevue business. That said, I'm going to entertain a motion to open for public comments.
Motion.
We have a motion made in second to open for public comments. All in favor? We are open for public comment.
Mick McPucci, sixty-one Continental. Just two things. Has Public Service been paid any of the roads? Got to head that up. I mean, there are some...
They've completed, you're talking specifically PSCNG?
Yeah, well, they don't know.
Okay, I know, but they've completed, they've completed a great lot.
No, but they've been working around town.
They are. These motorized bikes and scooters, are they permitted to, where are they permitted to ride them?
That's a very interesting question. I'm sure the chief will correct me if I'm wrong, but as far as the electric scooters, and I'll go as far as even say the dirt bikes and the quad that you see, because they don't have license plates on them, and don't blame me, and certainly don't blame our police department, they can cruise up and down the street, wreak havoc on the street, and there's absolutely nothing our police department can do about it. Why not? Because it's not motor vehicle violation, because they're not motor vehicles by motor vehicle standards with license plate. I'll take it a step further. Why not? If our police department tries to engage, if they hit the lights and that quad speeds off, that dirt bike speeds off and crashes, the department and the officer potentially liable. This is the state that we live in.
But they do create havoc.
They do.
I always say it one in a, freezing in the dark, just crossing across the street.
Very frustrating.
Good evening, Michael Sheldon, forty-seventh Floyd Street. I have some questions and comments to make regarding Resolution Item Number nineteen, which is approving the sale of a piece of property located at block nine zero zero one, lot twenty-eight point oh one, for public sale. This is a rather small lot, tucked behind two Washington Avenue properties, both five-eight-eight Washington Avenue and five ninety, five ninety-four Washington Avenue. The latter property had already been approved by the planning board a couple of years ago for another mixed-use building, I think it's twenty residential, retail on the ground floor. The buyer for this particular property is Genuine Properties, and it's an LLC, Genuine Properties. Genuine Properties LLC also happens to be the owner of five-eight-eight Washington Avenue, which is the former Wiggles Club. I think Mr. Graziano, at one point, twenty, thirty years ago, was the proprietor for Wiggles. They also own both five-eight-eight and five ninety, ninety-four Washington Avenue. Sure, several of you, not all of you, know who actually are the owners of the Genuine Properties LLC. But if you're not, I just want to let you know that one of the proprietors, and I have the registration form here, is none other than Mr. Villano, who is sitting here to, behind me to the right, who is a town employee, and he is your purchasing director. But even more interestingly, the other partner in this matter, in the LLC, Genuine Properties LLC, is Right Angle Realty. Now, some of you may say, that sounds familiar. Yes, Right Angle Realty is the LLC that is owned by Brigitte Galati and Merza or Mike Otovic. Those are the two gentlemen that initially appeared before the planning board in March two thousand nineteen for approval for the Whiskey Priest establishment. And after getting that approval, they in turn apparently leased the property to two other gentlemen, who are actually the proprietors who run the Whiskey Priest establishment. Both of them were here back in March with their attorney to serve me with a cease and desist demand.
Is there a question, Mr. Shaw?
No, I'm coming. You have five minutes to talk about whatever I want. But it's not a coincidence that all of these interconnections exist. In fact, now that Genuine Properties LLC owns three properties, to complete that, to complete that large rectangle, the other remaining property in that grid is one thirty-one, one thirty-seven Graylock Parkway, which is owned by another LLC, Bellevue Operating LLC, which just happens to be the owners of six oh five, six oh nine Washington Avenue, catty corner on the other diagonally across on Washington.
You can clearly research LLCs. Is there a...
Well, but you're, tonight, you're going to approve declaring that property an area in need of redevelopment. So you've got all of these parties who are either indirectly or directly associated with the town hall, and I also want to add, as I pointed out previously in months gone by, that Right Angle Realty LLC, they're the owners of the Whiskey Priest. The guys that are running the actual establishment there are the same people who last August entered into a contract to buy your building next door to the town hall. And Brigitte Galati also happened to be the previous owner of the King's Windows Store lot on Washington Avenue, which was sold in April by, to the Board of Education, to presumably put up a parking garage as part of this bogus shared ordinance, bond ordinance for nearly twelve million dollars. Three of those trustees voted to approve that sale. Those same three trustees who ran in two thousand nineteen had you as their campaign manager, and you largely financed their campaign. So what I'm saying here is that what people need to do, and I'm sure authorities are, is to start to make the FBI organization chart and to connect all the dots and to show just how all of the beneficiaries are surrounding you, Mr. Mella. In fact, in the lawsuit that was just served upon you by Mr. Di Lorenzo, comment fact number seven talks about how all of that precipitated when you...
Your time is up, Mr. Shaw. Thank you so much, your time.
...building the agreement and in action regarding a denial letter. And that denial letter was for the Whiskey Priest establishment.
Your time is up, thank you.
You better hope they're...
Anybody else for public commenting?
Just to make a comment on that property there, based on the square footage, it's thirty-six hundred eighty, three thousand six hundred eighty-six square feet, which you can build a house on that property. So all I'm bringing up is based on the offer on that price, it is too low. I mean, come on. Where are you going to buy a building of all that in Bellevue for thirty-eight thousand dollars? Michael, you should know that yourself.
Mario, you were here before, you know how that we don't just pick a number out of the air.
No, I realize that, but what I'm saying is, maybe you should reject the bid and...
If you want the answer, Mario, I'm going to give it to you. If you don't want the answer...
No, I've got more to talk. You're taking my time, okay?
You won't get the answer.
No, you can give me the answer later on. I've got a lot of time here to sit down. But what I'm saying is, I'm just objecting to the amount. It should be a lot higher. That's number one. Number two, what is that thing outside on your, I don't know if you still hold the building enough, right in the parking lot here? What is that thing? Looks like a mural. No, what is it? I mean, what is it supposed to represent?
I didn't paint it.
No, what is it supposed to represent? A photo represents something.
I didn't paint it. I didn't commission it. I didn't think it up. I didn't design it. I didn't do anything.
Somebody, I mean, you're right here in town. Oh, you should know it. I mean, somebody has to...
Maybe we could ask the construction official or zoning officer?
Is there any ordinance against something like that or the size of it?
Maybe you could ask the construction official or zoning officer.
It's like we're getting ready for Halloween here. Really, I'm serious. I mean, that is ugly. To me, that is, makes it look like, to me, in my personal opinion, of course, it makes it look like I'm just drove into a depressed area. It's like graffiti.
Thankfully, your opinions are usually in the minority.
What?
Thankfully, your opinions are usually in the minority.
No, no. I'm just giving my views of it. When I watch TV and I see things like that. All right, that's that. Resolution nineteen, I already discussed that. I noticed this Resolution fifteen. We would have discussed this at the planning board, we, the area in need of development, that's the gas station on the corner of Washington Avenue and Graylock Parkway, and also a home. I still can't understand how a home falls under redevelopment plan, one seventy-four Graylock Parkway.
Who's explaining you like the plan board?
I know, but it makes no sense. It makes no sense, absolutely no sense. And in regards to the lawsuit, and I'm reading Star Ledger today, and I have the article here with me, it says, it was pretty much critical of you, and it was a vote of five to two. If what I'm reading is correct and it comes out in court, I believe that's a clear violation of the Oakner Act, and two of you should be in a position to resign.
Okay. Anybody else for public commenting?
In regard to next door, I believe we had, or we still have, a graffiti ordinance that should certainly be...
Construction code officials up on the second floor? He's also a design officer. He can help you with those.
Again, like previous call, I'm making a comment to, I didn't know it until tonight, but I got six calls and a couple of emails with that picture. I didn't know, I thought somebody was sending me a picture of a postcard or something, till I got here tonight and seen that atrocious thing over there. It's disgrace. All right, we'll let that go. Look, with these road repairs, it gets worse and worse. You do these road repairs, water repairs and all, and I keep down for years that, why are we filling with gravel? It sinks. After they pave it, it continues to sink, or the surrounding dirt from that excavation finds its way in between the gravel. Go look, you know, I have no other way to go home except Home Street or Bellevue Avenue, which is a parking lot all the time. Go up Home Street and look at all the, Home Street was paved when my grandson was two years old about eight years ago, and I watched, he watched them pave it all. It was a nice job. Go look at Home Street now. Every time you did a water line replacement, it's an abortion. So you get up there and boom, boom, boom. Your car, you know, shocks on cars last only so long, not in there. They just did another repair a couple of weeks ago on Holblower Avenue, coming in from Home Street, filled it with gravel, it sunk. You see the cars, but now people know where they are, and these cars are going, they're driving around it. Why? And Public Service just did, all their excavations you just did. I went, I even spoke to one of the guys, I parked my truck in Washington. They fill the excavations with the same dirt that came out of the street. Why are we doing this incompetent way, spending all this money on gravel and then bringing the dirt down to public works? It makes no count. You, Councilmember Bell, Cazarelli, Burke, you've been on there for years, Mr. Notari. When is this going to stop? This incompetent way of filling these holes? And go tonight, come in from Home Street.
Benny's brought it up before. We've asked the engineer, we've given Benny the answer, and he just wants to talk about it for a couple of minutes. All right, I want to take away from time.
You know, you put a foot of dirt in, and they have this spalletto compactor, you compact it a foot. You put another foot in and compact like Public Service does. Same dirt goes back in the same hole. It's just unbelievable. And it's a public disgrace that we're reading the paper about another, thanks to you, Mr. Mella, another lawsuit, which we, the taxpayers, are going to have to pay both sides of the legal fees and all of the disgrace.
He's actually had about one lawsuit or two lawsuits in the last five years, contrary to the prior term, prior administration, actually.
Yeah, well, take a look at all the lawyers that we've hired and all the consultants on the...
Back to backs.
On their term. The other thing is with this, the other articles in the local paper about, and the state, you're one of sixty towns with the sick and vacation time. And that outrageous one point nine million dollar ordinance you put me and the other you put me and the other taxpayers in hot for to give these bribes to public officials, some policemen, some firemen in the town to retire early, and we gave them half a million dollars in bribes. According to your documents, it wasn't the word bribes. It was called incentives, which is the same thing and all that. But this is in the now. It was in the paper that we're going to hire, I think you hired, a labor consultant to do. I don't, there's no problem. Vacation time cannot be carried over. I was in office. I found out about the law. Here's a letter to say employees. I sent the letter. I give it to you. That's all you have to do. You don't need an outside attorney. You're an experienced town manager. You just tell them, according to states, that you're not allowed to carry your vacation time.
Thank you, Mr. Frant Antoni.
Vacation and the sick time, Bob, were written up in the papers.
Thank you.
He's the town manager. Handle, instead of hiring outside labor council, teach it no better.
We had ordinance, we had ordinance on the agenda today to address just that. Thank you. Your time is up. Anybody else for public commenting? Mr. Fletcher.
Good evening. From First Main 33 Main Street. First of all, the Main Street, the town, excuse me, the state was in, they started to clean it up. They did a, pardon my French, a job of it. Now, with the rain the other day, now that they've taken all of the debris away, now Main Street was a little flooded. Not horribly, one little section of it. So what is going on with that? Are they done, or they're just saying to the town, you guys are on your own to clean up the rest? Or are they still coming back because there's a mattress on Main Street that's been there for about five months?
So again, with that, we have reported concern. You don't have to wait five months to report a mattress?
Yeah, no.
If you need that cleared away, I'm sure the manager can write that down now, but let's not look at mattresses for five months. Let's use reported concern.
Yeah, no, I just, I was just made aware of it because I honestly, you know, you know I have no problem coming yet. I honestly was just made aware of it the other day, so that's why we're brought to you. And what is the deal with the track? Now, I know it's a beautiful track. I saw the pictures. It's lovely. The blue is a little off-blue. It's not oil blue, like the school colors should be, but, you know. Is it open to the public?
It will be open to the public. So there are rumors circulating for some reason that it's not for our residents. It's only for high school kids. So that's not true. That is the municipal stadium complex. We are very unique here in Bellevle, that the varsity fields are all the domain of the municipal. That's not, it's very rare. Most high schools have facilities at their high school that are theirs.
Right.
That is the municipal stadium complex. The municipality bonded, the municipality paid for it, municipality got it done after 20-plus years of not having a track. That is for our residents. It'll be open dawn to dusk as long as there's not a game going on.
It's not officially open yet. Do you have a date when it officially will be open?
I've been on emails and text messages with the manager daily because I get this question all the time. We're going to be open very, very soon. About a days, a week or so, maybe.
And we're actually allowing people to walk and run on the track. We do not have a recreation ban.
Right. It's not officially open yet. The police aren't going kicking everybody out.
Gotcha. And I don't know if his last question really belongs to you guys or the Board of Education. The JV team, the Bucks JV, do they play at the stadium?
Assuming they can.
They have.
They have, okay, because somebody said that they're basically practicing in a parking lot? And again, so I'm not sure if...
We have more facilities today in Bellevle than we ever have. I find that very hard to believe unless...
That's a coordination effort between the athletic director for the high school teams and the recreation director coordinating time. I mean, we have legs, we have everything. I mean, we actually have, we actually have two football fields there, and it's all coordination of time.
So there is a football field for the varsity and the JV to practice the same time that they choose to.
It's coordination.
Coordination. Okay, alright, thank you.
Thank you. And I have emailed the state. The state did respond, saying that they're going to hand that over to maintenance, and we'll see what happens. All I could do is email, and that's what I did. Anybody else for public commenting? Just state your name and address for the recommend.
Yes, Wendy Harris, 7 Quinton Street. Hello, everyone. Okay, let's make this quick. I'm back again. I don't know if everybody remembers from years ago, I might complain about parking. Oh, I know you remember, but now I'm back and it's bigger and better than ever. Glad to see everybody back. Okay, let's make this quick. First of all, I'd like to address a couple of issues all related basically to Quinton Street. We have a dead-end sign at the end of the street, but yet cars zoom up the street like they're onto highway. They get up there, they don't see the big red brick building at the end. The problem is that when everyone is home, there's no room to maneuver. People that live there have a hard time maneuvering, so somebody coming up there that has no idea, it tends to be a problem. People using the street as a dog park. We now all of a sudden have a couple of people that have dogs on the street, which I am a dog lover. I do not have a dog. Uh, some people, they tend to, there's a wall, retaining wall at the back of Family Dollar, and they use that area, I refer to it as a dog park. So we also have people coming from not on the street walking their dogs up there, too. There's a factory at the end of Cleveland and Quinton Street, which I'm sure everybody is aware of. They park cars on Quinton Street, on Cleveland Street, cars that are damaged, visibly damaged, like look like wrecks or whatever. It seems like something should be done about that, but I don't know. Again, the valet people from the restaurant, they use Quinton Street as their parking lot or whatever, eliminating spaces for the residents. Uh, street cleaning. After the street has been cleaned, can you then park your car on the street? Okay.
That's new, by the way.
Oh, okay, because everyone else knows. I didn't know, and I lived there for a while, but...
Probably didn't do a good job of communicating it, but that is fairly new, last couple of years.
Well, the people from the factory at the end of the street, they let me know that they're in the clean street, so I was thankful to that. Autobody on Cleveland Street. Now, I'm sure people would like to know, with Autobody that's open 24 hours, I find that very strange, but there's always some kind of function or whatever. I, you know, I'm just saying. When they have a new house on Quinton Street, glad for them. Hope they sell it. I understand that there was an offer pending, but I just would like to say, I hope you let the people on the street maybe put a sign up because people use that as an extension of their parking lot and park in the driveway. So if somebody comes to look at it, they can't get in. Cars on the street parked from out of state. A big bugaboo of mine, like several, Virginia, at least for one of them, parked on a consistent basis. Is that okay? I thought like, oh, so anybody who could park...
The public street, unless they stay there longer than 48 hours, then you call the police department. They mark the tires.
Okay, that brings me to the next thing.
They will issue a ticket and door tow.
People are aware of the ultimate size, so they park the street. So in order to have something done, I'd have to wait till Wednesday, and usually they'll leave from there till Tuesday. But now people are getting hip, and they're moving their cars on Saturday, trying to get... It's an ever, never-ending situation. People have more than one car. Unfortunately for me, I'm a single car, the only one on the street that doesn't have a driveway or a handicap spot. So people that have numerous cars, we have houses that have five and six cars for drivers, never mind extra cars. So I have to be punished because I only have one car. I'm not entitled to have a place to park. It was suggested the last time that I get a handicap spot. I tried to. My doctor would give me one, but now that I'm officially part of the 65 club, maybe I'll go back and he'll give me one, so. People, I know...
Do the rub up.
People are also parking with multiple cars. They park to save spaces, like they leave a little bit so when they come home. We have people that take Ubers on the weekends because Friday they know they're not going to get a place to park. And I just wish somebody would just come down and see, like, I'm probably not going to have a place to park tonight, so I'm probably going to get a ticket because if I can't find a place to park, I'm going to park in the driveway. I'm a new house, and I'm telling you now, so they know where I live.
That's always the unintended consequences. People come here, and I see the deputy chief is here. He's making notes. I'm assuming...
It's the deputy chief, because I hope someone...
Right back there.
I spoke to you last time, you referenced it. There's a cop.
Captain Biggs, our brother.
Oh, okay, yes, okay.
So he may make some notes now. There might be increased enforcement, and that may be enforcement against you, but I hope not.
I don't see where it was. I guess the only way I'll get is if you catch me parked in the new house, which I won't because I can't run that fast to move if they come, but maybe you address some of the type of situations. Please, I mean, just anybody who could come down anytime of the day and look at it. I don't think that I'm asking for much.
I'm assuming whatever is in his domain, he can do, and other than that, it'll be up to the town manager.
Before, nothing, you know, the police came and they went on a little mini ticket blitz for like a day or two, but like I said, that was years ago, and now since the pandemic, it's back to...
We can do a patrol division lookout order and do it more frequently, but we are...
So, I know my time is up, but there's nothing we can do about, people can come from anywhere and park their cars for as long as they want and...
No, not for 48, after 48 hours, they will be ticketed.
But you don't understand it. They know how to play the game.
I...
So then, yes, the answer is yes again. Thank you.
Alright. Anybody else?
Good evening, Mayor Council. I think it goes in that before Nullun Street. I just want to talk about the new track. It's beautiful. When I go by, I love just looking at the track, the whole facility. But tonight, when I walked by, there was a soccer game going on, and all the spectators were actually standing and drinking and eating around the track. So I just want to know, is there going to be anywhere for spectators?
I don't believe so, and I was there on Saturday watching a soccer game and took multiple pictures and sent it to the manager and the deputy mayor, showing people sitting against the fence that are eventually going to blow the fence out, having dogs and sitting there. I said the same thing on Saturday.
Is it possible there's like about maybe 15, 15 feet from the fence to park a lot?
There's no room.
Can't put bunch of pictures there?
Not 15 feet, no.
It has to be in a certain area.
Keep in mind, that was the, growing up in Bellevle, playing Bellevle sports, that's always been the practice field because it was always not maintained, or it always wasn't up to par. Now it's really nice, but it's still a secondary field. And unfortunately, because of the track, eight-lane competitive track, first one in probably northern New Jersey, there were some offsets, and we just could not take any more property from the parking lot and the driveway of the school district.
Just question.
No problem.
Because I noticed that it's missed by.
I said it, Sarah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else for public commenting? Seeing none here, none. We'll entertain a motion to close public commenting.
So moved, second.
We have a motion made and second to close public commenting. Clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Cosrally?
Yes.
Depanyan?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Notari?
Yes.
Robel?
Yes.
Strumlow Burke?
Yes.
Mayor Mullen?
Yes. So we have a consent agenda. I'll just give everybody a few seconds to look through it. I don't see any highlights, so it didn't change much. This is the version that we got.
Make a motion for the consent agenda.
Second. We have a motion made and second for the consent agenda. We're going to move the whole thing. Clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Cosrally?
Yes.
Depanyan?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Notari?
Yes.
Robel?
Yes.
Strumlow Burke?
Yes.
Mayor Mullen?
Yes. Next on the agenda is new business. Do we have any new business? Seeing none here, none. So next on our agenda is executive session. This is what's going to happen, everybody. I'm going to entertain a motion going to executive session. The reason why we're going into executive session is to discuss the Di Lorenzo lawsuit. We're going to go to the executive session. Once that motion is made and adopted, I do need to clear the room. It does not end the meeting. You most certainly are able to go outside and wait for us. We will not take any action during executive session, and I give you my word, my promise, and my commitment, that when executive session is over, we will reopen the meeting, but that will be only to adjourn the meeting. There will be no additional action taken. No action taken during executive, no action taken after executive, other than a motion to close. Unfortunately, I'm going to entertain a motion to go into executive session. We have a motion made and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'm going to just give it a minute or so to clear the room.